Start with the budget we did. My budget we just to the flag, the United States of America and to the Republic where which is stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Is Jordan on?
Yes.
Okay, very good, thank you. Let the minutes show that we do have a forum all our presence. Those who'd like to join me in prayer, would you please move?
Lord, we ask you to look down upon the citizens of not only Shoshone, but Fremont County, the state of Wyoming in our country, and give guidance to to all of us that are in elected offices to to try to help uh our citizen and represent them well, the people that elect us here. I ask you this in your name, Lord. Amen.
Can approve, have an approval of the agenda?
Move approve the agenda? Oh. Is that?
Second.
Okay.
Then moving the fact we have approved the agenda. Any further discussion been approved by? Councilman Stettler, second by Councilman Whitey. Any further discussion?
Do I ask about your travel voucher now? I don't see what it says it's for.
We need uh.
First proven the agenda.
Very good.
Yeah. Or. That ain't, that's the second agenda.
Okay. I'm confused, sorry.
Just approving the agenda.
Okay.
Any more discussion? And being all in favor, say aye. Aye. Well, same motion passed only affirmative. Any communication from citizens? Nobody online? None being will move on to the consent agenda can have approval of the minutes, October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Any discussion?
I'm a little behind, I'm moving approve the minutes from October fourteenth, twenty twenty five.
Second.
And move by Councilman Stettler, second by Councilwoman Hartey, we approve the minutes of October fourteenth, twenty twenty five. Any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye. 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 Well, it's the same motion passed only affirmative. Approval of the bills, October fifteenth, twenty twenty five to October twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, we have a motion to approve.
Make a motion, approve the bills.
Been approved by Councilman Whitey, can I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hartey, discussion.
This um tree lawn care, is that the amount for the whole year, or is that a month?
No, it's uh.
Poorly.
Any questions?
I don't have any.
None being all in favor, say aye. 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 Aye, same. Motion passed only affirmative. Travel voucher twelve, twenty three, twenty five. Gee, what is that?
Something about Governor Gordon, I can't. I can't read your.
Okay, that, uh, we had app tags in land in Hudson. And Governor Gordon uh was in Lander, so I went to Hudson, we did app tag, and then went to Landon and Governor Gordon had a. And we discussed, got to discuss briefly what we're, what we're talking about our Wyoming cardio pulmonary. And trying to set up a meeting with his team and shine on it in the future. But that was, that was that, that was so traveled from here to Hudson. And then I should have came home and ate lunch though. And then went, hey, anyway, here to Hudson, Hudson to Lander. Lander home, I'm gonna be pretty trouble voucher.
Second.
Been been moved by by Councilman Steller, second by Councilwoman Hartey, Councilman Whitey was a close third place. Uh, any, any further discussion? None being all in favor, say aye. Aye. Those part, motion passed only affirmative. Winter visitors counters director to park Helen. It's good to see you.
Thank you for having me here. So um I I will say I saw that I was um on your agenda on county ten, so I thought I would come and do a report. But I hadn't actually heard that I was presenting tonight, so I wasn't sure what you were hoping that I was going to present on. Um, but I do, um, I'm glad I'm here. Um, and I do have some information for everybody, and I also brought parts of a um presentation, and I see you've got the director's report up there. And I also brought um the presentation that I did for our board of directors. Um, just to give you some updates of what we're doing and some of our fun and recent activities. Um, it's really important to the Wind River Visitors Council that we maintain transparency and good relationships, and I do feel that there's been a lot of conversations recently um without the Wind River Visitors Council um. And I just want to answer questions for people, maintain one hundred percent transparency, provide any information you need um and move forward as a team um and um, as you know, we are working to um amend our joint powers agreement. Um, I did bring for you a very clear document that shows those changes. I wasn't going to get into that tonight. I can also send this to you in a digital format. Um, but this is the current joint powers agreement, which clearly scratches out um what we are hoping to remove and then adds in um the pieces that we are hoping to add. Um, and this is based on uh the Uniform Municipal Fiscal Procedures Act, which is the um act that we are legally required to follow. We currently follow two different acts, um, and then the Special District Act. To get one hundred percent in line with the Uniform Municipal Fiscal Procedures Act. I'm happy to answer questions about that, also happy to send this to you in digital format. Um. I wasn't gonna, I don't want to go through it word by word, but if anybody has questions about any of that, I'm happy to answer them. Um. I know there's been some questions about who the fiduciary is for Winter River Visitors Council, um, which is lodging tax funds, and it is the Wind River Visitors Council. It seems that everybody's in agreement about that, so when there's budget approvals and things, we are one hundred percent responsible, and I just want to say we've always had a perfect audit, so I'm actually really proud of the organization and the way that we manage things um and handle responsibilities. Um, another thing that has been coming up lately um is our Board Discretionary Fund, and I've been hearing that there's been conversations circulating um about what these funds are being used for. I am here to say the Wind River Visitors Council is not interested in litigation. We are not um attempting litigation, we are just trying to update our joint powers agreement to get in line with state statute. Um, there has been discussions um not with the Wind River Visitors Council, but with the municipalities about what the Board Discretionary Fund is being used for and what it can be used for. So I have a memorandum for all of you, also happy to send this out, and I really am here just to maintain one hundred percent transparency and to try to clean up some of the rumors and misinformation that is going around. So here is information about our board discretionary funds. We're currently looking at possibly, you know, one. Um, we're currently looking at possibly working with an organization called Grand USA on a marketing campaign for international marketing, which I'm really excited about. I've been told that that would cost between five and ten thousand dollars. That's the kind of thing that would come out of board discretionary fund, so it's unexpected opportunities um to fulfill our mission. Um, but I'm pretty excited about that. I'm just waiting for the proposal on it. And we also just recently sent several of our board members. Um, we hosted the event last week uh which took place in Riverton, which Governor Gordon attended, and we were thrilled to have him there. Um, and we hosted that and were able to send four of our board members with those for discretionary funds to be part of that event, which is filled with learning opportunities and information and networking opportunities as well. So it was good to have the governor there, and that took place at the Holiday Inn in Riverton. I think that, I wasn't going to give you that, but you can have it if you wanted. Um, a couple of other things. Um. We did meet earlier today uh with a couple of, well, um, with with you, Tammy, and also with um with the chiefs, and we went over some wayfinding signage. And we're excited that that project is moving forward. We are working on wayfinding signage in both Shoshone and in Hudson, so we'll be meeting with Hudson tomorrow morning. Um, some other projects that we are, okay, lodging tax is slightly, slightly down from last year. Um, but it is at, right now, the country is seeing a decrease in tourism, and we are so slightly down that I'm actually surprised that we're only we're just a teeny tiny bit down from last year, so that's really good news for our community. Um, we also hosted Continental Divide Trail Awareness Week. Um, this is a requirement for us. We had applied to be a gateway community in Lander um last I think it was twenty twenty two, and we are required to have a yearly event to recognize the trail, so we did that. We had um a week long, um, a week of activities. Pretty exciting. Uh, we did some community outreach on county ten. We provided a coupon for through hikers, so they could pick that up at South Pass City. Um, they got ten dollars off at the store. We worked with South Pass, friends of South Pass City to arrange that, so when they came, they could get their coupon and go and get candy in the store, jawbreakers or whatever you buy in South Pass City. The Sarsaparilla is, I know, really popular there. We also hosted a podcast and a community hike. Um, something that we are working on, which I am hoping to pull some of you into, um, is a community cocktail. Um, I was recently at an event and they were talking about how it was in Phoenix, and they were talking about how the Phoenix cocktail was developed and how tourism has increased and people are excited about this special cocktail called the Phoenix. So we at the Wind River Visitors Council would like to hopefully have maybe Wyoming whiskey or probably Wyoming whiskey sponsor it and get local bartenders to um be the judges, create different drinks, and then um create a community cocktail, which would be released on March seventh, three oh seven day. So we're excited about that. I think that could be really good for our area and really identifying um our, the spirit of our community. Uh, we're also working on our website rebuild. Um, it's coming along. We've had, we're two, two weeks into it now. Probably be released in February, and it's going to have AI, and it's going to have itinerary building tools and um all kinds of exciting pieces to it. Uh, we have an ad running in the Denver International Airport that starts on November eleventh, runs through January fourth. And I think I talked about this a little bit before. Um, they have the ad. It's beautiful pictures, and I can show you on the computer here, but it's I'm dreaming of a Wyoming summer to go with the theme of I'm dreaming of a white Christmas, but it's showing um our area QR code logo. Um, we're able to track, so we'll be able to see how many people are actually clicking on that QR code, and I'm hoping to start getting feedback of people who are seeing it, because if our locals are seeing it, that means other people are seeing it as well. Takes twenty seven seconds, I timed it to go from the top of the escalator to the bottom, and it's hanging over the escalator, and people are just trapped there, so that's a really great place to actually advertise our area.
Where's that again?
Um, when you go in the B concourse and you go down to the train.
Oh.
You're, it's when you're on the escalator and you're stuck and you're feeling stressed out, and then you see this beautiful picture, and it says I'm dreaming of a Wyoming summer with links to our area. So hopefully, somebody will see it in this room. Um, I I realize I travel a lot, and I'm not traveling during the period that we have that add up. But uh it it's running the whole holiday season. Uh, we're moving along with our destination development projects, which is the wayfinding signage. Um, today, we met, um, picked out some locations. We're working with a contractor to create a strategic plan for those. It's looking like the Shoshone signage will go up next summer. Um, but we'll, we'll work through the process. We're going to have designs. Um, I think it was a, I think it was, I'm looking at the two of you because you were part of the meeting, but I think it was a good meeting. And I know that the contractor is solid and did a really nice job with the Du Bois Lander and Riverton signage.
I think ours is better looks.
Yeah, I, you know, I love the ideas that were coming up today, and I took a lot of notes. I'll be compiling those, sending them to the contractor, and then they'll create design mockups. And it gets smaller and smaller and smaller till there's just one left, and then they work directly with Wyoming signs and with YDOT. So we can um avoid all of that messiness, um, and it just, it just happens. It does happen slowly. Um, we were supposed to have the other signage up early summer, and now we're now in October, and it's supposed to go up any day. But there's no signs up actually yet. We are also working with the county, uh, the county commissioners on a semi-coinstentennial, there's the word of the day, um, project for next year. Um, we're creating fifteen historic locations. We'll have water bottles with a uh two hundred and fifty logo. Um, we've got um travel stories working on it. Prizes are picked up at the museums, so we're directing people to the museums. We applied for a couple of grants for that. Uh, we got ten thousand dollars for the America two fifty grant and seven thousand four hundred and sixty seven for the Lore Foundation Grant. That doesn't go through the Wind River Visitors Council, it goes through the museums and the county. Uh, but we were able to help to secure that funding for those projects. We also have, and it launched yesterday, um, a breakdown on our website. It's a countdown to July fourth of next year, and so yesterday was day two hundred and forty nine, and I have created two hundred and fifty activities, one for each day. And so you get a new one each day, and then if you click on it, you get a list of all the ones that have previously shown. Um, I wrote those up all at once, and hopefully, I might go back and check them, make sure I'm happy with all of them, but um they're going to just keep running one at a time through July fourth and fun project in the office of having everybody just physically count. So we get the start date right, because that would be a real bummer if we got close and then realized we were off by day. Um, we have redesigned our newsletters, and we have, or we have a PR person, and she was recently worked with all of her clients to go to the Travel and Words Conference. Um, where she was able to present some story ideas to media writers, and we'll hopefully get some um publicity out of that. Um, as far as earned media, we were able to secure twenty eight million, five hundred and seventeen, or sorry, five hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and eighty nine for the reach, and we had articles um that we had solicited in the Real Food Traveler, the Washington Post, Fifty Plus Marketplace News, and Northwest Travel and Life. So some exciting media coverage there. Um, and that's really my report. Um, I I, you know, I want, I want to answer any questions. Um, if anybody has um anything they want to ask, or um, I know there have been lots of conversations going around that we haven't been part of, but I'm here to say ask away and I will answer.
Well, I'll ask you, one of, one of the rumors that you spent discretionary funding on legal fees.
The.
Was there discretionary funding spent on legal fees?
There was to work on the joint powers agreement.
Okay.
Yes, there was, and we've also spent some money on, we're going to spend some money on some T-shirts that are logos for, we have destination days at events where we have to wear those for the event last week with the governor. Um, and I know there has been, and I would really like to clear this up. I know there has been a conversation about three hundred thousand dollars going around for years, and I would really be interested in clearing that up and then not not continuing to bring it up, and I know that um this has been something that has come up recently with um, well, Mayor Highsmith, I know, has been talking to city council members around the county about money that um three hundred thousand dollars, and I would like to just explain to everybody what happened there, so that we can all be on the same page and maybe close the book on this, because this was years and years ago, and I still don't believe we did anything wrong. Neither do the four attorneys that I have now asked. Uh, but we were offered a grant through the Wyoming Office of Tourism, the Destination Development Program Grant, um, which is eligible to the twenty seven lodging tax boards around our county. We were eligible for three hundred thousand dollars and had two weeks to apply. We applied for it, we got it, it's what's paying for the wayfinding signage. Um, a question had come up with this council when that happened of whether or not we needed to get our budget reapproved through the town councils. We asked our attorney, our attorney said no. Uh, we have since asked three other attorneys, and the attorneys say, no, your joint powers agreement does, it says you need to get your budget approved. Initially, it does not say you need to get budget amendments approved. Um, we had previously, since nineteen eighty nine, done many, many, many budget improvement or budget amendments. And um we had never had been questioned about it, we'd never had an issue, so to me, this was not a problem. Um, but when that three hundred, when we accepted that three hundred dollars on, on for the community projects, the destination development projects, we had some really hard times with this council, only this council getting our budget approved because of it. Um, our joint powers agreement doesn't say we need to do budget amendments with the municipalities. It also says we don't not need to, so that's where I think the question came up. Uh, definitely differing appear, differing opinions with that. Um, but I still hold that we did nothing wrong, and the four attorneys that I've asked have said the same thing.
Attorney at the time said it was by state statute, uh, I'll explain what was explained to me that by state statute, that's unanticipated revenues. Uh, if the town of Shoshone gets unanticipated, unanticipated revenues, we, we got to go through the goes through the same budget process, and that was, that was the advice we received then. And so, but attorneys can have different different opinions, even the Supreme Court can have different opinions, but that was uh you know, when you know, that was, that was, that was, that was the case.
That was the case, and and I would like to point out again that um the Winter Visitors Council since nineteen eighty nine has done numerous budget amendments. One of them was on January twenty seven, twenty twenty two, this was just slightly before that budget amendment. Mayor Highsmith, you were on our board. It was for the signage through a CARES grant, same kind of thing, CARES grant, Destination Development Fund. We put in the sign downtown and and you voted in favor along with the rest of the board, and there were no issues with that. So it's the same type of thing. And you know, we when we, when we went and applied for this Destination Development Grant, we believed we were doing everything right. I have not done any budget amendments since then, which makes things difficult for the organization. Because it means we have to decide exactly what we're going to do with no budget amendments. We have not done that since. Um, but I just would like to clear that up, because I know that the conversation is still going on around the county. And we can agree to disagree, but there is nothing in our joint powers agreement or in state statute that says we have to get our budget reapproved when there's an amendment, and as you know, Mayor Highsmith, you have voted in favor of amending it without it going to the municipalities.
Yeah, I'm just telling you the direct, the direction I touch should be following the same guidelines that the municipalities do because joint powers board will have to follow the same open meetings act.
I would agree with that, and that is why we are trying to change our joint powers agreement to the Uniform Municipal Fiscal Procedures Act, which is the same act that all municipalities are required to follow, and that is why we are trying to clean, I mean, you just answered it right there. That is why we are trying to clean it up. Because we are supposed to be following the same budget approval process as this municipality along with the other ones. So I'm happy to keep talking about this. I I would just really like to close the book on the three hundred thousand dollars. Um. Yeah, we, I mean, we can all agree to disagree on that, but um I, what I don't like hearing, I want us to be transparent. I want us to work with the municipalities, and it it just makes me cringe when there's conversations going on that we aren't a part of, and I truly believe we've done nothing wrong. We have never I truly believe we've done nothing wrong. We have never had a finding in our audit. If there was an issue, the auditor would point it out. And I would really like to see everybody, all of the municipalities, the county, the Winter Visitors Council and all of our other organizations working together. That, so, there you go. I'm, I think, I know it's getting late and I don't want to keep rambling. Any other questions for me? Thank you so much.
Do you have any dog park money?
Um, you know, destination development money, it might do that in the future, but I think that I've been hearing the conversations about the dog park. And I think it is really, really good for destination development. Um, I think I mentioned this when we did our budget approval, that when I travel somewhere, the first thing I look for is a dog park because my two dogs are ramming me in the back of the head. So um, yeah, so Councilmember Nordine, I would welcome you to get in touch with me and we can chat about that for maybe next year's funding and we can add it to the wish list.
Cool. So uh, what's it called? The Destination What Fund?
Destination Development Funding. And there's also a recreation grant that the uh, Wyoming um, Department of Outdoor Recreation is gonna be putting out. And if the um, if we approach it right, this could actually also be considered outdoor recreation, I believe, and we might be able to help with a grant application for that.
That's up through the Wyoming Department of
It's the, I think it's the Wyoming Department of Outdoor Recreation and it'll be a, an outdoor recreation grant. Um, that I believe is gonna start, they're gonna start taking grant applications soon. Um, and then Destination Development Funds, which um, you know, we get three hundred thousand every other year, but it's not a lot for big projects and we do have to split it up countywide. So it's, it might be a smaller chunk than um, than the grants, uh, the trust grant, but I am happy to help with those applications and I will put it on my list to keep an eye out for other dog park grant applications. Maybe there's one specifically for dogs somewhere out there.
We, you know, we, we are just starting the search. I don't know where all to go. So it's, it's basically a shotgun approach to see wherever we can go. I know there's some other county funds that also deal with, you know, uh, through the county conservation, I believe, you know, because we'd be planting trees and doing other things. And so I, I think they're, from what I understand, they'd be willing to, I brought it up with them, so we there's just, we just don't know where, you know, I mean, that's really our issue.
Well, and we need to figure out where so we can have signage pointing to it because the signage is just gonna go in before the dog park.
I can't, I can't put together grant until we know where the location's gonna be because the size of that is really gonna determine what the rest of the grant looks like, you know, so size and location.
Great. Well, I, I'll be in touch because I think that, I think we might be able to help with that on some level, even if it's just hunting down a grant for you.
That'd be awesome.
But I think it would be amazing to have that in this community. Uh, I mean, who doesn't love dogs? Yes?
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, that takes us down the unfinished business. Down coordinator duties responsibility job description.
So I'm assuming this has been amended based on the discussion two weeks ago when I was truant and I'm not here?
Yes.
Okay. Are we in discussion or what are we at here? Are we making a vote?
Making a motion to approve this town coordinator.
In motion to approve the, the county, the town coordinator. Uh,
Duties and responsibilities.
Town coordinator for the town of Shoshone, the job, the job description approved the job description.
Right.
Now have a second.
A second.
Okay. Moved by Councilman Whitner, second by Councilman Nordine, discussion.
It was approved by Tammy Hardkey and seconded by Nordine.
Oh, okay. Make the correction. Discussion.
Wow, from what I've seen, I reviewed this pretty heavy the last couple of days. Um, and it looks like it fits and I, I, I see that it's not stripping our mayor of any powers. I just think it's allowing us to keep that collaborative effort. And I also think it allows our mayor to use the individual as a resource to help navigate. Um, especially during his times of heavy travel to make sure things stay on task. And to just keep the peace and a, and a proper work environment that we got away from as we've discussed in lengths the last few council meetings. So I think uh, from what I read here, uh, I, I just, I think it's pretty clear cut in your eye and we're not, we're not peeling anything away. Um, I think it's, I think it's gonna create a, the work environment we were, you know, searching for and hoping, hoping for and, and desiring.
Other comments?
It's, I think it's a lot written, a lot a lot better verbiage than uh, uh, first drafted. This is kinda more what I thought our discussions were trying to describe. I know it's tough to try to put a discussion down in a job description, but I thought this a lot more closely resembles what everybody's thinking. It's like, uh, it's, it's, I was reading the job description of the Assistant Mayor. It's essentially kind of the same thing, different, a little bit of different title edge, but it's, it's not trying to circumvent the authority designated.
There is some key differences between what Lander has.
Right, well there's.
I got all my.
Oh, go ahead. But I, I think it's, it's written a lot better.
Okay, well, A, I'd like to, to start, the, start at the top, uh, uh, it says position additional duty. Let's put an additional duty on a existing employee, not a, not a new employee, correct? That's what it said. We're not looking at hiring someone.
Right.
Hmm. No, I would. A. So that's actually be adding duties to another position.
Yeah, but the Lander one that you have there, uh, when we've all looked into it, is an elected council member. It's not a
No, no. The Lander, what is Lander is that it's a, an employee that's hired. That is hired. That's a, that's a job description for an employee of, of the town of Lander. But you know, there are eight thousand people, we're six hundred. Uh, A, I Okay, I, I've said it before and I'll say it again, I think we don't need it. Uh, Chris and I do a lot of this stuff together already. Uh, B, uh, I don't know where we have the money. I do not know where we have, we have the money. We're, we're a little tight on money right now. I don't know where we have additional money to pay for an additional, additional job. But if we were gonna come up with additional funding, I would look at spending a little bit more and, and have uh, some other duties involved with that, that included probably what the, the Lander Assistant Mayor does. That's a higher, higher position. Uh, that, that's, that's one, you know, uh, uh, maybe you got any ideas of how we would budget something like this if we are going to. But it's, of course, just because we come up with a job script and don't mean hiring.
Well, that's where I, I was just, it's agreeing on a job description isn't actually spending money.
Yeah, I, and I also, I also will interject. I don't think based off of having six hundred people in our town, that an assistant mayor is wanted. Um, it's, it's, it's not, not needed. And secondly, uh, based off of the last council meeting, our budget is clearly, there's money to operate with there. So I don't think that five hundred bucks is gonna be pressing. Secondly, uh, that's where I'm at.
Now, I would uh, maybe I, I might have different priorities, but I don't, but I don't, uh, feel that's money. I don't think that's money well spent because I don't believe we need it, to be honest.
We do need it.
And that is not my personal opinion. That's my opinion as mayor.
There's like, I, 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 I
And, and involved with operations. So let's go on several other issues.
Yes, Jordan?
Mr. Mayor, I guess. Okay. I cast a vote.
And we're not voting, we're in discussion.
Yeah, and I'm ready to cast a vote. We've been in discussion longer than two minutes.
We are in discussion. Okay, I have other things we're gonna talk about. Uh, uh, financial, uh, oversight, uh, I don't know, I already do, we only have three department heads. I work with the departments already heads with, with budget. Uh, we only have three department heads. I'd like to tell me why, why we, you think we need and we need someone that, I could use an assistant for economic development, many things. Uh, but I don't need an assistant to deal with, to develop, with three departments to develop a budget to present to the governing body for approval. Uh, personnel management, uh, this is way off. Uh, the, we should not have one department head interfering with the other department heads hiring and firing of their, their employees. There's no, we're lucking landers. They don't say that, uh, that
They're not here either.
It's The guidance assist in providing direction, guides to department heads, employees, uh, who hires and fires necessary, terminates employees, administers, also town human resources and performs evaluations.
Assist in that process. It doesn't say lead or dictate, assists. So that's where you're
We need to vote on this.
Your leisure comes into place and you get to decide what part of that, for that role is, is, is due and and absolutely this assistant can help with the economic development.
Hiring and evaluation, hiring and hiring and evaluation makes recommendations regarding employment termination of employees and managing employees, performing evaluation. That is each department head's duty in their department. We, we, we don't have, that is each department head's duty in their department. As putting this person in doing department head duty. Uh, so facilities assets, coordinate with department heads with the use, maintenance and upkeep of town facilities, infrastructure and equipment.
As directed by the mayor.
Pardon?
Only, only evaluates when directed by the mayor. That's what I've read. I mean, I've read this thing over and over and over.
This is not taking any powers away from you.
Well, it's more, but it's more, I don't, we don't need to make things more difficult and get more people involved with other, with other department heads.
He's been helping you all along since you've been in here.
I've asked him for help and we, and, and
And so let's just put a, a job description on it.
And he, and he's been doing it for free.
Yeah, so let's pay him for it.
It's, well, we pay him well. But it's, uh, but he's, he's done this and we, what, what
Exactly. So let's just make it official.
Then we
And I'm sure
This is something we don't, this is something we do not need.
Yes, we do.
Personally look at it, I personally take this personally because it looks like it's a, uh, an outright statement of, of non-support of the mayor, uh, that I can't do my job.
Nobody said that, but we all
Oh, yeah, you have.
I don't feel that way whatsoever.
We're just trying to give you some help.
I
You do need the help.
We, we can work together and do what helps us out. We definitely can. We've been doing it for, going on seven years.
Yeah, you have. And my point is you, you've done, you've done a, a, a great job and have a great working relationship there. And so why not, why, we, we should have our ducks in a row and have that structure to do so. The, the success that the town has gained in the last four or five years is an immense measure of both of you. So I don't understand why we can't continue the work forward and the progress forward. And all, all I see this do from my standpoint is just structures it with documentation essentially. Nothing changes. I mean, that's already what's in place. Assist you under your direction. And secondly, I want to commend you for the amount of time you spend attending meetings with the governor, uh, Harriet Hagman. Uh, it doesn't matter. You find ways to not only promote Shoshone, but find ways to grow Shoshone and attract things to this area. And in doing so, that has you out of the office. And so with your direction while you're out, if you direct who that role is designated to, I need you to do this. Well, then that gives some clarification on rather than no clarification. It gives a little bit more concrete. That's the way I view it. I don't view it in, you need help. I view it as in it just lessens your workload at times. That's all I view, yes. I mean, I, I don't think we have to reinvent the wheel here. I agree with you. Why fix something that's not broke? I'm just saying, let's put it in writing. So that's all I'm saying. I, I just think it's for the, for, for the continued of it, to just have it in writing.
Well, uh, we get down to knowledge, skills and abilities, education, bachelor's degree, public admin, business management or related field is required. Gee, I don't know for this, for this, do we need to have that at your guard? I would say you wanna, you know, and masters preferred, you know, uh, you know, or if you look like, or equivalent experience. I know my dad was offered a job at the state. Uh, I know that was probably sixty years ago. Then it said, it was what they preferred to someone with a, a geology degree, but with his experience, they offered him the job anyway because he was a self-taught geologist with an eighth grade education. But you know, I don't think that this, if this job script, this is a job script to move forward, you'd wanna have that in there. Because that fits, what fits Chris, didn't fit anybody else. Why would that be a requirement?
I think having something in there about having related
Correct.
Experience, not just field, but related experience would make sense. I mean, something like that would be there. When we're hiring somebody at the college, they, we have a master's degree requirement to teach courses. However, if they've been working in the field and they have a good field background for that, you know, we it's, you know, we get credit for that, you know, and so they may not have the masters, but they have, you know, some sort of equivalency as far as actual
You know, some sort of equivalency as far as actual experience goes, so I would like to see something like that added to there. I mean, that would make sense to me.
Well, a lot of the times it's. I think quite rarely that's standard. Language for identification for that type of. Ballpark of a role, but adding that and or. Where it know. Where it flows, it's not not have to be this, this, this. But also and or be substituted. Like you said.
Yeah, we want to be able to, I mean, there has to be some flexibility. I mean, the right person may not have any degrees. You know, I mean, so I'm keeping it open to be able to do that and the right person and the person with the degrees might not be the right one to have, you know, I mean, it's just, it goes both ways. So.
If if you go down some of the bullet points, some of them actually states, and this is a question I would bring up. By public relations communication, the mayor directs. Services representative communication for the town. Uh interact with, you know, public relations, various governments, blah, blah, blah. It and then we have enforced laws. It doesn't say how it directed as it's responsible enforcement of laws and ordinance. Well, that's our chief of police anyway. He already knows that.
Correct?
Well, yeah.
I mean, I mean, that's our that's chief of police uh above as a fault. Policy information and coordination acts as a primary liaison between the governing body. And other town committees, department heads, employ and and employees.
That comes straight out of the charter ordinance though.
It's uh that ensures that uh ensures that the directive of the governing bodies are carried out of. But that is not standard by state ordinance.
No, it comes straight out of our charter ordinance for what the position the town board era defined by the charter ordinance was.
Yeah, that that here, my question. Uh does that add general su- uh. Is that under supervision of the mayor or that eliminate the mayor from that? To me, I'm ready to that because it not specifically talks about the mayor as the one in the middle does, the others. The others uh. It says Paul other public relations and communications on the mayor directs. Is this cutting the mayor out of that? That's my that. How do you interpret that? Because it doesn't directly, but it says up above under the direction of the mayor.
I don't know what he's talking about either.
Bullet point, policy, information and coordination. Acts as primary liaison between the governing body and other committee.
That comes straight out of our charter ordinance. That's where that language came from.
Yeah, but we don't use that.
I I know I was asked to craft. A job description. I did that and it's just like looking for little things just to pick apart and and you know. It's kind of offensive to me because I did the best I could and it's just like cherry picking words and, you know, responsible. Just because I put in there responsible is me, that's the only the solely responsible multiple multiple people can be responsible for. Seeing a task to this fruition.
Well, there's multiple parents at home and that are and both super under supervision of both parents. I I think I think we're just. We're just spinning our wheels here and dissecting this way too far. And if our charter ordinance reads that and that's not something we use. Well, that raises a different red flag, I would say. And secondly. It's probably no different than some of our other ordinances that need to be. hashed out, looked at and updated, so. I mean, there's a million ways to skin a cat.
I see, you know.
I would say we if we're gonna have that, but as directed by mayor. As the one below. But does the what my question was up above. That's under the general direction of the mayor. So does that cover the whole process? But certain bullet points talk about the mayor's involvement. The others are are eliminating the mayor out. And if you look standard. State statutes standard, most municipalities are size. The vast majority, that's the mayor's job. That's the mayor's job. And it should be and that's the reason.
It's as directed by mayor. This is the way I view it.
All 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 points as directed by mayor. I I just wanted, we all get that same interpretation. It's uh since there were several bullet points that said it, seven didn't, I just wanted to confirm that.
And I think it's covered under the. Second item under the job description that says works under the direct supervision of the mayor. That's covers everything.
Okay, that I just wanted clarification, so everybody was. That we was that we were that we were under the standing. So I I'll before we go, I still think this is something that we're it's not needed.
I call the vote on this.
And uh. I just I feel this is a waste of time.
Well, I think what what it does is provides mechanism to pay Chris for the additional work he's doing. I mean, that's what I see it says kind of what is that.
I I agree with I agree with you, Mark, a hundred and ten percent, and you put it in words that I didn't, so thank you.
Well, I think we should adjust it next budget season, what I think.
He's been he's doing the work now, though. That's. I agree. Last budget, this budget.
Let's cast a vote.
So you made a I'll second.
Then moved by. Councilwoman Harkey second by council. Menor Dean, on favor say. I note the mayor opposed.
Positions already allowed by charter ordinance.
No, it is and we just approved it with as part of our, we haven't used any of that in the charter.
Hey, let's move on to the next item on the thing instead of getting in a.
It's already in the charter ordinance. All that that will have a job description for something already allowed by the charter ordinance. Still not funded.
What's LG?
Take over the take over the meeting. Uh no. Okay, move on.
Well, new business.
LG LP award nomination.
Can I ask what LG LP is?
What uh it's our insurance. Call me there.
Taking a vote on these individuals? Is that what we're doing here?
Right, on for board directors.
And we're just voting one? And has our current liability insurance not? We've had no issues, eh?
No, they've uh. They advised us. They worked with us also when we did our our employee boy handbook and guideline book and. You call them with questions. Then if we have uh if we have an employee. Problem we need advice, uh try to avoid lawsuits. They're. They're a good group and uh and served us served us well. So what we're doing, the current uh Brad. Bassi is the current chairman of the LG LP. He had been on it eighteen years. He's rerunning. He's out for Mopless. If you read the the other, everybody's qualified. But Brad's done an awful good job.
Well, I don't see why we fix anything that's not broken.
That's that was my thoughts.
Do we hold anything against him because he graduated from the University of Nebraska? I just. Or I stay, yeah.
I make a motion to approve Brad Bassi.
So moved.
So I want to get one.
Oh, yeah, he has been. I need a second.
Well, second.
In second, so. Councilman Whitner is through second by Councilman Nordean. Any further discussion?
I've known him since I was like four years old. They're decent people and they've been doing us a good job.
Okay. Any more discussion? All papers say aye. Passed all affirmative. Please report.
I left a copy of the. Numbers on. Think everybody's asking, everybody have a copy?
Bring your stuff up really quick. I mean, Grayson, you run fast and get a. What do you would you like, question, brother? What do you want? Yes.
You have mine.
Okay.
I'm good.
Okay, sorry about that. I don't have word. Most of them are actually. Interesting month um. We were fairly busy with uh. A wide range of uh violations uh. Including five warrant arrests. DUI, two controlled substance arrests. And we continue to um issue code violations. Um if you notice, some of the things are starting to be cleaned up, you know, refrigerators that are no longer in the yard. Some couches that are no longer in the yard and and some other things. There's some other areas that have not. So the next step, um I wish Marshall's here. The letters are going out for the clerk. And that next step will involve the town actually public works. Addressing and remedying the situation. At the expense of the landlord. So there's those four represent those four places that have not made any progress whatsoever. And ignored every uh request to address their deficiencies in their yards. Specifically. Egregious issues, not just, you know, some lean tier or, you know, the kid's bicycle there, so. Um we're taking it seriously and and I think that the. You know, it's time that. These places get cleaned up for the better benefit of the town and the opinions of the town for a little bit here. And if you want to live like that, you know, you can live in the county. But in city limits, you have, we have a limit, so we have. Expectations of certain requirements of how your property is going to be maintained, so. We tried to ease into this because obviously it's been years without strict enforcement, so don't want to go zero to a hundred, but I think we've. Done it in a methodical way that at this point, that's where we're at. So we want to do this before we're gets here also because. You know, that that's so fun and the snow coming down in the wind.
So they would click, they would pay if they don't do anything and they would pay for the services provided by the town to clean it up.
Correct, so the mayor has the mayor has the authority or is designated to uh enter onto property and premises for nuisance violations or. Once they've been notified of. Um and also the town has the ability to remedy those situations. At the expense of the landlord, had if they were to not. Pay that, it'd be like any other bill, working up into a lien on the property and other mechanisms. I mean, we're not trying to do that, but. There has to be, that's the teeth we have right now to be able to enforce these.
How much is that? You know, I mean, because it isn't. I mean, if it's just a, you know, twenty-five cent sort of charge and, you know, shoot, we'll clean up, you know, I mean, please come clean up my yard for me.
No, it'd be something along the lines of probably like seventy-five dollars an hour.
Okay.
Uh plus the uh. Use of the equipment and then the disposal of whatever property or garbage.
Okay, so it's substantial, yeah.
Yeah, it can get up pretty pretty quickly, so.
Good.
It'd be who of them to.
Good, yeah.
Work with us. And we'll work with them to remedy that situation. It's two-way street. We're not saying we're not willing to help, but you know, it requires them to. Take active participation in assessing these problems. Um but at least it's only four. A lot of people, if you notice, have made some incremental improvements and yeah, you know, I applaud that, you know, from doing nothing to something is is. Positive. And then, yeah, we had two more K nine deployments, so uh Nitro continues to uh. Get to use a sniffer and and do his. Do his job. He is free labor, basically. I always have to give him some food. That's pretty much it. Chicken nuggets or whatever. He's pretty pretty cheap employee.
Whatever you can get all up.
And another thing that uh is one of the police department is. A real proposal for a real organization, um so it's. Trying to, you know, when there was just me, Matt and Jeff, you know, obviously I was. Hard, I sixty, seventy hours a week was not uncommon. Between moving administrative and police stuff. Uh now with me being kind of hobbled for those five, six weeks. Uh it gave my my team a chance to. Run the show and and um through that. You know, I learned that we can uh reorganize um. Our flow chart, so to speak, which will allow me instead of being, say, seventy-five percent but. Working on patrol and and patrol in the streets and twenty-five percent administrative or working eighty hours a week or whatever. Um I can flip that the other way where I can be seventy-five percent administrative chief and working in the town's affairs. Administratively and then fill in where is needed as needed twenty-five percent of the time. And by doing so, um currently starting laboring. The uh it'd be a title change. There's it'd be a lieutenant and he would take over those delegation of a lot of those patrol functions that a typical lieutenant or captain would do. Um and then uh Jesse Moss, who was sergeant with the sheriff's office. And is more than. Twenty years of law enforcement. He was a supervisor for seven years, so. You know, just what he's doing is far as that is concerning. And then he would be able to take over as the sergeant on patrol operations under lieutenant. Under my direct vision or or monitoring, and so that's how the flow chart would go. Um doesn't require hiring anybody else. You know, as far as uh changing. Job descriptions, um the only thing I can do uh budgetarily is that I have. Uh you know discretionary funds, uh about two thousand dollars that we could repurpose for. Wages, it wouldn't be a big pay raise, it'd be like twenty-five cents an hour. I mean, it'd be a little bit of a. It, you know, that's without changing the budget. That's using the existing. Brain back of the budget.
He's already making more as a sergeant though, correct?
Was that?
He's already making more as a sergeant already.
Who? Which one?
Leaf Green.
Yeah, he's, yeah, he's already.
So he's going up to lieutenant.
Yeah, so he would. You know, it'd be twenty-five, the fifty cents an hour. You know, for the rest of the year that I could use that in my discretionary. And then we could readdress that.
Next budget.
Correct.
Next budget.
So, I mean, it'd be a little bit, you know, I mean, it's not a lot of money, but it's still something extra. It, it'd be a process. It's not going to be like that where he just suddenly he's running everything and it would be a, you know.
Smooth transition.
Yes, and you know, they kind of had a crash course for six weeks with. Um, I, you know, they, they.
Smooth it out a little bit.
Yeah.
But that, that would give you more administrative time.
Correct. Yeah, and it's not that I'll still be a working chief. I won't be like. Riverton, no offense, but you know, where I just sit in the office all the time, I'll still be patrolling, but it will reduce. That will shift mainly onto lieutenant. And then I will be more of a someone's out sick and someone, you know, you know, going here or a major problem, so I'm still doing that and then doing shifts. Where we have gaps, things of that nature, so, but it, it limits that. As whereas right now it's. You know, so it just kind of flips it on the other side. Um, but, you know. Like we just experienced creating a job description requires going to the town council, so that's the proposal and I'd have to write that and we could. Go through that, so.
I like this idea. I think it's great. I really do. This is a good plan.
Been after them to do this for a while.
Yeah. Actually, he told me he didn't want me to be the chief of police anymore. He just wanted me to be admin, so.
Well, I did. I most certainly did.
So this is kind of.
Seventy-five percent there with this.
Bridging that gap, yeah, yeah, and it, it. And I don't have to work seventy hours a week to get the things accomplished that I.
Use your team, yeah.
Yeah, so yes, it's a better use of the resources we have now. We have a good team. Um, and you know, span of control, three to five is what you're looking for. Um, you know, it doesn't make sense to have a chief lieutenant, a sergeant, one officer. That, that's stupid. Uh, but in this case, now we have that, that staffing level where we have seven days coverage. And we have a proper span of control, um, that goes into that, so.
With the amount of traffic, you know, that comes through Shoshone, I mean, we are not a town of five hundred people.
No, and I was gonna say earlier is that, um, if you can point in one town, this entire state with five hundred people, even a thousand people, that does as much as we do here. I'll buy you dinner.
Yeah, yeah. When I was going through Leadership Fremont County, they were talking about, um, Riverton. And Riverton had the traffic of a fifty thousand person town. I mean, this. And, I mean, a lot of, where'd they get their traffic from? Us.
Right through here.
Yeah, you know, so I mean, yeah. So that just makes sense.
So, um, but that's, that was part of, I just wanted the presentation, um, and, you know. Grab the job description and, and, you know, we can, you know. Obviously, a lot of it, a little bit easier because it's best practices and stuff like that, so it's a little bit easier to craft that.
Yeah.
Um, there's, there's more templates out there than. Otherwise, so.
Sure.
And then, yeah.
What are the K nine calls on here?
So, um, some of, sometimes we get called, requested, so the K nine is, uh, controlled substance searches.
Okay, alright.
So I guess I, I better clarify that, but yeah, so whenever it says K nine, it's specifically for a controlled substance suspected. And the K nine is then called to confirm probable cause that there is an eagle or.
Who? We don't have canines. On our force, do we?
We do.
Oh, we do.
Well, I'm one of the counties still.
No, county, uh, um, patrol's got one now and I believe Burton's looking at maybe getting one.
So, but these are our dogs?
Yep.
Dog.
Dog, yeah.
These are our dog?
Nitro.
Yeah, Nitro.
Nitro.
Delta Malinois.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
He's not a bite dog. He's just a strictly a, um, controlled substance.
Yeah, those are good dogs. I mean, for this type of job, they're great dogs.
And, you know, our area right here, obviously with the amount of traffic we get through here, you know, it's a major thoroughfare.
Does the dog go on traffic stops too and stuff like that?
Yeah. Yeah.
So don't be speeding.
Yeah.
Maybe she would, just to get, you know, get to know the dog, you know.
If you see the dog get out, you did something really wrong.
Oh, man, I guess that would be true.
Don't pet the puppy.
Yeah.
But, uh, so it's currently started to leave Green is, is the handler. Um, and he's actually a trainer of other officers who are training dogs, so he. He certifies other, uh, officers around the state. For K nine and for narcotics and, and since, we also have a bomb dog too. That's, uh, one of our part-time.
John?
Yeah, John. So we have a bomb dog that gets deployed occasionally.
Yeah. Wow.
He used to like go up when Presidents and Jackson and stuff.
Yeah.
Or.
Do a little sniffing.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I guess it kind of makes sense. I mean, the fact that we have a school here.
Yeah.
I mean, that really makes sense to have a bomb dog, yeah.
And, you know.
I wouldn't have thought about that until now, but you know, it's like, oh, yeah.
One of the bomb dogs.
Hope's threat, you know, came through, you know, just we live in that, that day and age where, you know. Emails and, and you gotta take them seriously, you know, you have to take everyone seriously and unfortunately they're. Large waste of resources a lot of times, but, uh, you know, you don't take it seriously one time. It turned out to be legitimate.
Yeah. The margin of error is not there, so, yeah.
Or there is none actually.
Yes, yes, sir.
But, uh. So that's, any questions on the new organizational chart or? Thoughts or?
Well, looks, looks good. We need to work on. And just a job description for the lieutenant.
Because I don't know if you are, should I say this conversation chief? I'm not sure that you're aware of, but the college is working on. Putting together a, um, an integrated, basically, well, it's a Wyoming Law Enforcement Academy out of the college. I don't know if you heard about that.
No, I. Yeah.
I haven't seen you at any of the meetings, so that's why I was letting you know.
Never been invited.
Would you like to be invited?
I would be invited.
I know the people that could get you there.
I mean. I, uh.
It just happens to be in my division. And Andy Hansen happens to be my professor that's doing it, so. Yeah, I can get you there. Not a problem.
Yeah, I know that. It'd be a good thing to do and, uh. Makes a lot more sense than Douglas.
Yeah, that's a whole nother discussion, but I'll just go with, yeah.
I know, I know. I don't want to pitch on the spot, but.
Well, no, I just, Douglas knows we're doing this, so. If this is, this is going to be, I mean, the support that we have, our service area for the college is Hot Springs, Fremont and Teton County. Agencies and all those counties are just, can't wait to get us, get the doors open on this thing. It's really pretty cool. It'll be post-certified in the whole bit, so.
Yeah, lots of rest of the Big Horn Basin.
You know, uh, we're gonna start with our Fremont, our, our area, and then we'll go from there, but anybody can come from anywhere to go to the school, go to school, and so.
And, you know, I'm a big proponent of, you know, looking at new ways to do things, you know, as you evolve and trying to find ways to be more efficient, more effective. And unfortunately, there's other places, entities in the state that just do the same thing because they've always done it that way and it's always going to be that way. And it's an ever-evolving field and. The threats, the interactions, everything is constantly changing and evolving and you gotta. Be adaptable.
Yeah.
Adapt or die.
I'll get you there.
So I will get this, uh, crafted and, uh, I'll send it out. Did I just say send it out? I will send it out for review and comments. Separate from any council packages.
Okay.
Probably a better way to do it that way.
Anything else? None being Jake, do you have anything? Like to pass on?
I guess we're still on the real estate, uh, still waiting on the surveyor because whenever I. For the plating, let's touch base on that, I guess. How did?
Have any, anything?
I want to say the parking lot's looking really good out here. They're doing a great job.
Drainage might be okay too. I was concerned about that.
Right.
They were okay.
Go ahead.
I get your husband to come by and look at some of your things.
We don't even hear. One thing I did want to bring up though is I see a lot of people are getting fences. Are they getting permits? Or do they know they need to get permits?
If they're just replacing it. They don't have to, but if it's a new fence, then they have to get a burn.
Right. And we need to kind of like put that in the newsletter or something.
Yeah.
You know? I mean, if it's to keep a dog and I understand that, you know, but. Very good fault rules.
I don't think the council's ever denied a building permit for a fence.
Yeah.
We, we kind of did on one.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yeah, yeah, no. Okay, that was a different, that was a little different.
That was entertaining.
We, we did, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, it took me a second to remember that.
Well, the electric one?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, we approved it amended. We had to get amended and then approved.
That's true.
We did.
No, you couldn't have, you have the wire, but you couldn't plug it in.
Right, so there was a fence that was permitted. It just had to be amended.
Had to be like de-electrified.
I think the only permit we've denied is the one who was renting in the trailer court that wanted a permit for yeast.
Yeah, because it was too close to kids.
I just ain't smart.
Yeah.
I think that's the only denied permit.
Councilor Whitner still on?
Uh, he had to go with his kid.
Okay. Councilor Nardine.
Oh, someone died.
I've got a couple of things here.
Okay.
So, um, first of all, on Thursday, so in two days at ten o'clock in the morning. I'm having a Zoom call with the BLM and what we're talking about is the. Getting the patent license, is that what you call it, for the, um, for the rifle range?
What's a patent? It's like a home stand.
Yeah, and so we're, it's basically transfer of ownership from the BLM to us. And so, Sarah Navarro, who is, um. The BLM representative in Cheyenne, so at the state office, she and Sarah Black are. Uh, ones that are kind of working with that and the idea is to get together, coordinate and just really to see what needs to be done. So this is, the idea here is just to keep, keep it going, keep it busy and there's even supposed to be a couple of supervisors there. They haven't said they were coming to the meeting yet, but. Tomorrow I'm going to bug Sarah to see if we can make sure to get them there. So anyway, I thought that was a good news. I thought that was a good step. It wasn't just a phone call where. I call back every two weeks and nothing happens. So I think this is really, I think that's, I'm looking forward to seeing just how that comes out. So that's what's happening with that. Um, the second thing was, um. We had our, finally, we had our first A two A meeting, so John is a part of that. Thank you, John. And, uh, so John and Lynn Thompson and then Ken Kundal and then Joe, my wife, and then also me. So the, the five of us are on this, uh, on this A two A committee. And so what we did, Mr. Mayor, as we talked, you and I sat down and it was a few weeks ago, but when you and I sat down to talk about just what this would be. I shared that with the committee and so we've kind of come up with a, a list of, uh. Projects and ideas that I think that basically we talked about or you, you know of, maybe not necessarily at that meaning, but we know of. And so those things, um, those things were, work on a strategic plan. So I noticed in the new position description, they just got approved. That's a part of it, so. You know, I would hope that we would be able to provide. We could even provide the framework on how to put that on, on, on that. I mean, and then, of course, anything that we put together for any plan. Has to come through here and there also has to be public input. I mean, there's a whole bunch of stuff there, but anyway. That's something, it would be coming through here, so it's not being done in the dark. It's going to be done in the transparently as we can possibly make it, so. And strategic plans are different from a comprehensive master plan. The comprehensive master plan or the master plan comprehensive plan, that's kind of like, where do the roads go? What's the zoning like, you know, and all those things. The strategic plan is that, oh, really the overs, overload plan. And every department that's in the state is required to have a strategic plan for their department and then they go into their master plan from that. And that's, so that's something that will be bringing together. Basically, it's identifying. Who we are as people, as citizens of Shoshone, what we want out of our community and where we want to go. And how does that all then relate? So of course, facilities planning. Roads, streets, sewers, all that's a huge part of that. So anyway, that's where we're working on that. Just what happens at the college happens to be putting together a strategic plan this year, so. Process, they think, and we'll be using some of that for this, so I'm, I'm pretty excited about that. As far as the, the master plan goes, you gave me a copy of the master plan. I gave that copy to John. So John is looking at that plan right now and the idea is to go in, they developed one for, um. When John was mayor of Dubois.
Right.
They developed a master plan up there. So with that experience, John is looking at our master plan that we have. And we'll bring that back with comments and things and try to get that updated and, and put together as well as possible. Still waiting for where the zoning is going to be, but somebody was on, you know, for some reason, on his back for about two months, but you know. You know, that was just a joke, but anyway. I, that's, that's a part of that as well. Dog park falls into, you know, and that would actually be part of a master plan. But a dog park location and that sort of thing. There's a lot that goes into a dog park, but before we can actually apply for any grants, like you heard me tell Helen. I mean, we, we've got to know where it's going to go, which dictates the size and, you know, what are our criteria to even come up with what a dog park would be? I mean, what do we want out of that dog park? What are the expectations? And that then defines what the grant. Applications would then look like.
Speaking of dog parks, uh, with Helen during our meeting today, we actually designated a dog park for signage.
Yeah.
As a down the road, um, number six, so that's actually in.
All I can say is God bless you. Let's, let's work on that and get that done. So I think the dog park is going to be kind of fun. So we, we, we had a lot of fun at the committee discussion about this. We kind of. Ken had some ideas, you know, and then we kind of went around and Joe and I had some ideas and, you know, Lynn, I mean, everybody had some ideas, John as well. And so then what we started doing is, uh. After the meeting was over, well, you know, let's do a tour of Shoshone. So we went on a Shoshone tour to just kind of see different. Locations that we talked about and one that I, that Tammy had brought up that you had mentioned and. We found that on our tour, tour de Shoshone. That didn't take too long to do, by the way, but anyway, in our tour de Shoshone, um, we, um. You know, that spot next to the old library and then to the east of that, I believe, that's kind of a big open space, but. I, I don't have the list for you. I just, you know, the, I mean, we have to really develop the criteria first and what we're really looking for. I've got. An idea, but accessibility is a big part of it. And accessibility not only for people in Shoshone, but it's really for people driving through town too and. Putting a lot of things together to be able to make, I mean. When Joe and I travel, we listen to our books. We look them up. We've been in the Dubois Dog Park multiple times, you know, because we found out where that was and we then. Took care of the dogs. Really love going up and down the hills of the Shoshone, of the Dubois Dog Park. We just need to do that. So anyway, the shooting range is a part of that too, you know, so this. It coordinates nicely with the shooting committee that's part of the town that hasn't really done anything. That's my fault. But it's being incorporated into here and I think that can really kind of help get some things done. And then lastly, but not leastly, I need to sit with you and talk about the development on the. Yeah, west end of town and just where we're at, what's the status, what's happening with the Realtor? I, I don't know any of that and I.
You weren't listening.
Probably not.
I just brought that up. We're still waiting on the surveyor to get it plotted.
I hit what you're plotting you were talking about.
The new.
Or maybe I misunderstood the situation.
I was going to talk about, but where you're asking, so I'll, I'll talk. We're, we're waiting, we should be hopefully getting this planted. Uh, relatively soon to seventy some acres. We do not, and we'll probably file the plots in January.
Right, right. What about the utilities that we?
And the forty, huh?
Utilities, where, I mean. Electrical.
It would be good to get the plat done here and then we can finish so we can have a plan for, for all the utilities. And we, and they gave us a basic. Outline of the streets. We got, forgot exactly what we want on our streets. On that seventy-three acre, we'll probably, next council meeting will probably be presenting that.
Okay. So you two presenting that?
Not me. I just keep nagging at him about it.
Okay.
Because the Realtor said she can't do nothing with it till it's planted and then. Two weeks or four weeks ago, we approved the plating. Maybe it's two weeks ago.
Last meeting.
Yeah, you weren't here. That's why you don't know.
Yeah.
See, so I.
So we, but we need to really get it planted before we can start.
Before we can sell anything through the. Before we can sell anything through the realtor.
They gotta know what they're buying, right?
Yes.
It's just that simple.
And then we also, they said that outside has utilities. So once it's platted, yeah, the realtor can start working on while we're still working on the internal.
And, and so they in December, we submitted our plat the county of taxes.
Oh, I know.
Our taxes were a whole bunch.
Here. Once that.
Why wait to January?
Once that plating's filed, the taxes are going to go away. The tenants gotta pay.
Yeah.
So we don't want to plant it till we're ready to sell it, but we can't sell it till it's planted, but I think we're there.
Yeah.
So that is the chicken that has to come before the egg.
Yeah, so, so we'll wait till January to, to to file. So there's no need to file now. So, so we'll, so the goal is not talked up with our surveyors out there that, that, that's our goal.
Okay.
And I've talked with our other surveyor, that's our goal.
All right, so good result of having that discussion.
You weren't here when we, we kind of hashed that out quite a bit last meeting and I apologize.
That's right. I, you're right. I wasn't listening because I wasn't here.
Oh, I did. I hit the ground at three this morning. I'm tired.
But anyway, so that's that's that, that's sort of what we're, we're going, going with that.
Well, you know, good, so. All right, we, we will focus the odd.
And in that, you know, the dog park, we're looking at sort of a horse park in that seventy-three acres. It should be a, you know, it's going to be sort of the arena. That'd be definitely a place if someone breaks down underneath it, parks their horses, for the people that live in that area, because they can have horses.
On the far side.
Yeah, and the acre, two acres.
Right.
And then we also got a, the fire, county fires already picked out a lot where they want to, just, you know, where they want to put their, the, the new fire hall they build this.
Okay.
And, and who knows with county, but they said within five years, and that was last year.
Okay.
They don't really like the fire hall where it is because it's right on the main.
Highway.
Highway, whereas if we can move it to where they can kind of get out on the road without pulling right out onto the main thoroughfare for safety reasons.
Well, they have their reasons for why they want things where they do. So
Yeah.
I mean, that makes perfect sense. Yep.
Oh, yeah. But anyway, so.
All right. So thank you for that. Um, it was brought up that, uh, the road grader, the blade that actually cuts the road has an arch in it. And so when the roads get graded, they're not graded flat, they're graded in an arch. That's what I heard. I guess Mike would have been talked to. I, this is your, this is all secondhand and thirdhand. And Mike said, yeah, you know, we just need to turn that, that edge over. Well, because I guess those edges could be turned over. I don't know. I'm going with what the root, you know, sure, I'm going, turn the edge over. So anyway, I'm just making a request that if that indeed is the case, maybe Mike could look at it and then turn it over.
And my, my retort would be, uh, you know, you never want a completely flat road. You want a crown.
Exactly.
Well, but.
That would be my retort.
But was that blade flat to begin with or did it have an arc in it?
Well, especially built, so it would make.
Paid extra.
Make, make the crown.
It's a feature.
It's called the crown of the road.
And, and that would make sense if it were covered the entire road, but I don't think the road grader does.
Yeah.
So, you know, nice try, guys, but not sold. All right. So just a thought. Anyway, the last thing is, um, so there I was. All right, so my, my true confession here is I'm a, uh, I'm a pathetic shotgun shooter, but I really want to get better. So it's not uncommon for me to kind of make my way to the, uh, as the sun is peeking this eastern sky to get a few rounds in before I, I have a throw and ready to do all that stuff before I head into work. And, um, so anyway, when I was out there this morning, I ran into Bart. And Bart, uh, was concerned about the sidewalk project and where it was coming in. And I, it seemed like a pretty legitimate thing. Down at the, uh, the rest area, there's two things. One, there's a big tree, cottonwood tree that's on the, we're talking about on the east, you know, the west side of the, uh, parking lot as it is now and where that, where the sidewalk is going in, um, there's talk of removing that tree. But the tree has been there. So Bart doesn't want the tree removed. Can't they go around the tree? So that's the first thing. And it, because I mean, you know, where we live in Wyoming and as Charlotte Donaldson once told me, any tree that grows in Wyoming is great, you know? But so, you know, it's like, okay, I get that. So anyway, he was concerned about the tree and the issue with the tree was that the roots are going to grow and then break up the concrete.
Correct.
Do all that stuff. And, you know, so I mean, there, that's, that's a part of it, but can they go around it? Because I know that on the other parts, so I drove over there this morning and when I, I looked at that spot and I went, yep, I, I can see where the issue is. And it's so close to the curb of the parking lot, which hasn't been broken apart yet, you know, by any roots. Maybe it's too early, but that tree's been there for a very long time and so is the concrete. So, anyway, but as you go down Second Street and look where they, I mean, there's all sorts of utility poles going down and the sidewalks are going around utility poles, you know, so if we can go around a utility pole, why can't we go around a tree? I mean, it's just a thought, you know, I mean, it.
And I talked with Kyle and here's the thing on that is, uh, that tree with the missing bark and the, the uh, disease that it's going to have to come down in the near future. Now is that one year, five years? Um, but.
Is it diseased?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a healthy tree.
So it's, it's, it, it's a ninety-five-year-old man with COPD.
Letting live.
Well, but it's never too late to stop smoking.
But, um, what we were going to do is it, because right now we have the same types of trees, so we're going to plant a, uh, uh, a maple, uh, elm or.
Maple elm.
It's a variety tree, so it's a shade tree, but it gives some texture and some more aesthetically appealing than the, the same trees. So it gives a little bit of variety, kind of like we do at the Town Plaza, where we have a multitude of different types of varieties of trees.
Yeah.
Doesn't be replanted. Uh, they've got a, excuse me, a mature tree that's already that grows fast and it will be, um, not a little sapling, so it'll be a twelve-foot tree.
Does Bart know about the, uh, replacement tree that would go somewhere in the vicinity? Would it be going in that vicinity?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
And then, and it's just the concerns of, you know, the tree having to come down in the near future, um, mixed with the possibility of it compromising the investment in the sidewalk that we're putting in. And so I mean, I, I agree on, you know, if it was.
Where would you plant that new tree?
To the west.
West of that?
Hmm.
Okay. How far out?
I think like ten feet.
Okay.
But it's, you know, gonna grow, but it'll give a nice, actually, we're going to put two trees in, but it's going to, it'll give a nice, um, textured visual appearance.
Yeah, right.
When you come in, so.
How big a tree are you going to put in? I mean, hopefully not a sapling, but something that has.
It'll be a twel- it'll be a twelve-foot tree.
Twelve-century?
Twelve.
Twelve foot? I'm going twelve-century.
Yeah, it's a redwood.
Okay.
Uh, yeah, it'll be a, uh, twelve-foot tree.
Okay.
So.
It'll, it's, it will give some immediate shape.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Um, so that, that tree is going to need plenty of water to get going. And so that Bart's second concern was when you look at how the, they're looking to put in the concre- or the concrete around the, um, access boxes for the sprinkler system in the, it looks like they're kind of coming right up to the edge of the boxes. You, you know, you take off the top box, other box and there your valves and controls are in there. Valves will have to get replaced from time to time. He said it's an old system and they've had to do a lot of work. His issue is that you know, we, they could have access to the valves, but sometimes, and it's not a combo with sprinkler systems. I know I had to do a lot of digging, following the pipes away from the box just to be able to fix the issues that I had on my, on my sprinkler system. Well, if the accessibility to the pipes is covered by concrete, we have a little bit.
Talked to Kyle and he said that's, I don't know where Bart was getting that impression.
Well, you look at where they dug. I, I got out, walked up to those boxes and it's right, I mean, it's right up to the edge.
They were, I'll, I'll get back, I'll get Kyle's response to you.
Okay.
Because it was that that was taken into consideration. Um, but I don't think they talked to Bart about it.
He, he was our community guy last year. He deserves to be.
Oh, yeah. No, I mean, he brings up good points. I mean, you know, but.
Well, he was hesitant about me bringing it up, but I, I said, no, I want to, I'll, I'll bring it up. It's, it's a good discussion, you know, it's, we're talking.
No, and we don't have a lot of trees here in town. So I mean, I I don't take getting rid of trees lightly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, so, um.
A question. Do I, the sign, is it going to be lit up? On the building?
What signage? Oh, our signage? Yeah, soon electrician gets to it.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering, I thought, wasn't it supposed to be lit up?
Yeah, yeah, right now the electrician get to it.
And the other thing I want to do is I want say that Kathy Souls has retired. I just wanted to say that she did an awesome job when she was here.
Yeah.
And that we all appreciated her. But I want her to be recognized.
Well, she did a, you know, coming from the outdated, outmoded, uh, processes that were implemented, um, when she first started here and I was working here part-time right after she worked and started and, uh, then she migrated into the court and, uh, through that over the last five years, you know, we implemented a lot of changes and, uh, and brought us a lot more current with how we process things and handle the volume of uh, our courts and keeping things, um, up to speed. So, um, she did, uh, hell of a job for five years and, uh, I guess almost six. And I hope that she, uh, enjoys her retirement and, uh, and her mark that she left here, you know, is, uh, what we missed, but it, uh, she left a mark that the town is able to build for her. So.
She was one of the first people we met when we moved to Shoshone. And she was so friendly. She was so welcoming and Joe and I both felt very, very happy to be here. I mean, we just felt like this was really nice. I mean, and she, she put on a, a really good face for Shoshone when we met her for the first time. But I, so I just want to say that she's just was a really nice ambassador for the town.
Kathy actually worked here over six years, including her part-time.
Yeah.
She started part-time for.
Yeah. February of twenty nineteen, I think that's when she started. But regardless, she put in a lot of, uh, a lot of hard work on that initial getting things up, um, and, uh, and you know, Tenille was obviously taking that and continuing that on, but, uh, she built that foundation, um, her and Skip and, uh, and she did a hell of a job. So, I agree.
Uh, one last thing, and that was, um, in our Tory, it just, you know, in the last few weeks, Joe has seen the sign on the, on the side and just goes, that's a great sign. She really is impressed with that. It really, I mean, it sells Shoshone, you know, it just really sells Shoshone. And I just wanted to say that a community member who I happen to know very well, um, says that she, that sign is just really awesome. So.
Yeah, I think you're really good.
Yeah, I've gotten multiple calls, calls.
Yes. Yes. I'm done now.
Yeah.
I made the motion that we adjourned this.
Uh, Chris is going to address just a little bit of economic development to many stuff.
Oh. Um, this is a real, it'll be quick. Uh, so, um, we have uh, approved, uh, a project uh, through the economic committee, well, it was recommended in the council and approved it, um, for a daycare. And we haven't really had a lot of progress or haven't heard anything back on that. And, uh, yeah, and I, uh, she wasn't here today, but, uh, she, uh, her husband is doing the project kind of on the side. So obviously he has his job and then he's doing it in this piece. But originally, um, they were going to do it, you know, kind of work as you go. They do a little bit, get receipts, get reimbursed, do a little bit more. Um, but they decided they're going to do everything all at once and then so it's kind of slowing down too, because they have to wait until they get some money to keep progressing. Um, but they are working on the interior, doing a full remodel on the inside. The outside is, uh, almost completely done. It's got the, uh, to tie that up. I just don't have all the siding up yet, but.
Chunk of the siding.
They have a big chunk of it.
Yeah, I'll go by it today.
Um, and then.
We talking about where the?
Yes, right on. And so that will be a, a daycare. Um, hopefully it'll be open or excuse me, completed and, and ready to go, um, sometime early next year. Um, and there's obviously a huge demand, you know, for daycare and I think she's going to be really, um, a strong economic driver for Shoshone, having that availability to have employment here and have a daycare and a place to, you know, have your kid, um. And I think she hopes to be able to expand in the future, but this is currently going to be a home daycare, um, not a daycare facility. So she's limited on capacity, but um, I think she's going to do an outstanding job when it's complete. Um, so that's kind of status on that. Uh, we have um, right around fifty thousand dollars in non, uh, or un
Committed.
Committed funds for economic development purposes that have, we've retained since that absent sales tax has gone away. Um, so those are things that are not, um, that, that money is still there for additional projects or funding, um, for economic activity and economic development. So just something to consider with your A two A and, and as we go through these processes, trying to come up with the best, uh, best bang for a buck, whatever that looks like.
Yeah.
I thought it was a note, I was kind of like, what the heck on the daycare deal? But it was a note, they haven't taken the money.
Nope.
Although it's approved, the daycare is not done. They have not taken any.
And, and part of that is, uh, you know, protects the town.
Right.
You know, and.
And it looks better too.
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, that has to be certified by the town and it's not something that can be repackaged and just flipped and sold. You know, we're not going to give them money and then they turn around and sell it and they.
No, and I don't think.
Would, no, no, but we had to put that stuff in there, you know.
Right.
Be a good steward of the town's money and the taxpayers' money, so.
Anything from the audience?